Call the meeting order and Christina do the roll please.
Fish, Johnson, Cole, Lawrence, Marso, Steen, Mary Buck.
Yeah. Approval of the agenda, any additions or corrections? If not, we'll look for approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We have the minutes from August twenty-nine and September three meetings. Any additions or corrections to that?
Move to approve.
Motion second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We have the claims on pages ten through twelve. Get a chance to look them over. Uh, look for a motion on that or discussion.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion second to approve the claims. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We have the consent calendar. Have a couple plats. We have a wage adjustment for Melissa and Nick. We'll uh, look for a motion.
All move to approve, second.
Motion second to approve the consent calendar. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We're down to visitors and timed items. This is an opportunity for anybody that would like to talk to the council or address the council on any particular issue, whether it's on the agenda or not on the agenda. If you would like to do that, this would be a time to do that. If there's something that's on the agenda that you'd like to talk about, you might want to wait, but come on up. Give us your name and address and...
This is on, okay.
Yep.
Sawyer Van Horn, um, twenty years old. Um, so I work at McDonald's right here in town. And I've relied on the uh, bus service to get to and from work. And I've relied on it for over a year. Um, but then, within the last few weeks, I've requested rides and all work. Might work at eight AM, might work at eleven thirty. My schedule varies. And I've been informed that they're, they're, um, sorry, a lot of bathroom biking, biking here. Um, I've been informed that they're too full. They, I've been, it's been made crystal clear to me that we cannot pick you up before like ten AM because we have forty-five preschool kids. Look, I understand that you're busy, but I'm a little confused because it's like, it's a small town. Like, this is how I rely to get to work. So, I can understand, I can understand if this was like a big city. You know, like, let's take Sioux Falls. It's population of about two hundred thousand. It's a big city. Someone might not be able to take the bus or for whatever reason. I mean, they're a bit, I can't imagine what the Sioux Falls metro has to go through. But it's, Brandon's pretty small. I don't ever remember, in the last year, I don't ever remember them being so busy where it's just like, huh, we can't pick you up. And they had preschool kids last year. And they said like before nine AM, can't pick you up. So I, there was times I had to work at nine AM, I couldn't control that. So, they picked me up, I'd be a few minutes late. It wasn't the end of the world. Work didn't care. Like, it wasn't a big deal. But, I don't know how, I don't know if they just had a lot of young, you know, young toddlers that are... I don't know if there's just a lot of young toddlers that are seeing more people enroll in preschool or what? So, the question comes now, okay, what can we do about this? Well, I have a bike. It's not the, I don't live very far away from work, so it's not the end of the world, the bike or, you know, have to rely on my parents, whatever. But, I can't rely on my parents all the time. They're, they can drop me off sometimes, but not all the time. They're both working and have to be at work by a certain time. So I can't always rely on them. Eventually, the weather is not going to be absolutely, not going to be su- well-suited to bike or walk to work. So when that comes, you know, late fall, like, so let's say, November, December, when can't rely on mom and dad, can't bike or rock to work, then how am I supposed to get to work in the morning? I'm, and I'm simply asking that question, just, you know, voicing my frustration. You know, I want to keep this, I just want to, you know, bring this up in a civil way. I don't want to, you know, piss anybody off or whatever, but, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I've been, I've been working with Sawyer, Sawyer's called me about this situation. So, yeah, pretty familiar with, with it a little bit. I did talk to, I think it's Lisa at the, at the bus company. But, yeah, it's just kind of the nature of the beast right now that, good or not good, we got a lot of kids taking the bus right now. And unfortunately, Sawyer, they, they can't make any commitments to Sawyer. They can't, once they get the kids dropped off, usually they can take, bring them back home. Um, but they're just at capacity right now. So it's just kind of the nature of the beast right now.
First time hear of it, so I, you know, I can talk to the bus, but yeah, there's times where they got preschool kids and they just, they can't handle anymore. There's sometimes there's preschool kids that sit down there for a while too before they get dropped off. So, we have two buses going during this time of year, um, every day, so.
Yeah, you might want to just check in with them, but it sounds like that's the issue.
Thank you for bringing it forward. And during public comments, we can't take any action because it hasn't been published ahead of time. But we appreciate your, you letting us know and we'll work on it.
Right, like I, I understand that, it's just for...
Yeah, yeah, it's good to know, so thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any other visitors and timed items? Okay, we'll move on. Um, we have a public hearing. Uh, resolution thirty dash twenty-four, special assessment rule for unpaid fees. Had a chance to look them over. I'll look for a motion. Any public comments on that? Look for a motion.
Can I ask you a quick question? So the, the, the big one there for two thousand eight hundred and twelve, just, we had to mow it a ton of times? Is that what the scenario was?
No, we actually mowed it once. I think their first bill was twenty-five hundred dollars because it, we, we usually don't do it until somebody calls in. So, when they called it in, it was very tall. Um, it required weed whacking and mowing. And I think we had a couple people on staff all day out there, so. It's two fifty an hour. I think it's two fifty minimum and then it's two fifty an hour.
How long ago did that take place?
I'm gonna say July, early July.
I'll move to approve. Second.
Motion second to approve resolution thirty dash twenty-four. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
And sorry, real quick, how do we, is this on the property tax? How do we get this money? We, we assess it to their property taxes?
We assess it to the property taxes. And they've been, they've had mailings, so.
Okay, we also have a special event alcohol beverage license for Wild Prairie Winery. Any comments on that?
We had a first and second, did you guys vote on that resolution?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries, my mistake. Uh, the special event alcohol beverage license for Wild Prairie.
This is for the winter farmer's market at the Faith United Church. She has three dates listed there.
Okay. I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. All business. We have the second reading of ordinance seven thirteen, adopting the twenty twenty-five budget. On pages twenty-five through twenty-eight. Any further discussion? If not, I'll look for a motion.
Move to approve, second.
Motion second to approve the second reading of ordinance seven thirteen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We'll go to standing committee reports, uh, starting with the golf course. Not much to report. Um, go to parks and rec. Got the work report on twenty-nine and thirty. And we've got a request for a five K run in Aspen Park. Any comments on that?
No, it's, uh, it's been done before. They usually start there, end there. There's a map in your package showing your proposed route. It's the typical route come out of Aspen Park, down Aspen to Split Rock, up to Holly, down main, and then ends in Aspen Park, adjacent to the pool.
Yep. I'll look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion second to approve, request for the five K run in Aspen Park. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Um, then we have the Aspen Park road and parking lot paving. Got several pages in the handout. Pages thirty-four to fifty-three. We'll look for any questions, discussion?
I want to thank Tammy for sending that attachment. That was very helpful. All your explanation and that kind of thing, so thank you. Or whoever did that, I know you sent it. Okay, thank you. That was helpful to see it all laid out like that.
Oh, yeah. Uh, taking a look at a, at a alternative option for Aspen Park, which would include paving Aspen Park Road from, uh, basically where the curb stops now in the north, all the way down to, the options include all the way down to the hockey rink, construction of a parking lot between the swimming pool and the tennis courts, as well as, uh, three options for paving of the main parking lot around fields, A, B, C, and then, uh, kind of where the, the old RC track was. So there's, there's lots of options to, to look at and consider. You know, paving of the road from the existing roadway. It'd be adding twelve feet to the west side of the roadway, down to roughly the parking lot entrances. It's kind of a rough area. That'd be four hundred and thirty thousand. If you wanted to add additional curb and gutter, that'd be another two hundred and forty-six. The pool parking lot would need to be added if the twelve-foot addition was placed on the west side because all of the parking in front of the pool would be eliminated. So that one, you know, if you're going to do the project, that would have to be done. And that would be, uh, include curb and gutter. To include, uh, to control the storm drainage going into the detention to the west. If you take it from, uh, where it terminated at the parking lot entrance, all the way down to the Brandon Valley Hockey Association property, it's another six hundred and ninety thousand. Curb and gutter is another hundred and ninety-six. So total sum for the roadway and the pool parking lot would be somewhere between one point five seven five and two million.
Does that include paving the, the parking lots by the ball dymers?
No.
How much is that?
That's, if we get into the parking lot options, the main area, what's labeled as the main area, is the area from the sidewalk between field A and B to the north. Um, that's eight hundred and twenty thousand, another hundred, hundred and sixty-two thousand for curb and gutter. And then we get into the options, option one A, one B, and one C, is the parking lot which would be to the west of field A. So, option number one A is the largest, provides up to a hundred and forty-eight parking spaces. Option B would be a hundred and eighteen, and then option one C is ninety-one. And each of those has a, has a different cost ranging from three eighteen to five twenty-nine for just the parking lot. Uh, we can run numbers all day. What we're looking for is, is, you know, what, what are you looking for? So we can narrow this down a little bit. In my mind, if you're looking at this, parking lot options, we're always looking for parking space down there. So I don't know that we would want to, uh, pave the two smaller ones or choose options B or C because you don't have as many parking spaces. So, you can narrow it down to how much of the road you want to pave, whether or not curb and gutter is involved, and the main area parking lot with option one A would provide the most parking.
Tammy, what's the condition of, um, the road coming into Aspen? You know, we kind of just covered it up there for a while. What's the under, underbelly look like?
Uh, not very good. I don't really know that there is much structural stability to that because that is one of the concerns with it. If we just add twelve feet to the one side, we still kind of have a crappy road right next to it.
What would the cost be for this plan?
Total?
Yeah.
If you chose to add the twelve feet, um, the pool parking lot, extend the road down to the Hockey Association, the main parking area plus one A, uh, one point four, uh, two point nine million roughly?
Randy, park board hasn't taken a position on this yet, correct?
Correct, park board met, but they really just got it and did not have a lot of time to chew over it. They chew on it, they, we, we, not they, we discussed, um, but went in with the idea that whatever came out of that session, there was not going to be a recommendation that night because there was just too much to do and too many people to talk to and think about and do all those kinds of things. So, uh, park board does meet on Wednesday of this week. I think, I, I, I know your position Barb, and you, you want this to come from, you want park board to at least give us their thoughts on it, which they have not given us anything at this point. But, I also think, we can't just say, here are two options, what do you think, park board? I think, I think they need to know where we're, where we're leaning or what, what we're thinking and why we're thinking that a little bit, which I would take to them on Wednesday if, if we come to some kind of decision tonight.
As I understand it, if we do the Ironwood extension, it would just be to our property line, there'd be no paving inside the park?
No paving inside the park. It does include, uh, extension of a gravel road from the property line to the cul-de-sac that's there. But no paving inside the park. And with this plan, because it's all park, it's city-owned property, there would be no special assessments, no, no fees added to any landowners in that area, correct? We'd be planning, you know, we'd, we'd budgeted two point nine in the twenty twenty-five budget for Asp- or for Ironwood extension. We would take that and move it over towards Aspen Park Road project, if that's what you wanted to do. And then if, if Ironwood would get done at some point in the future, we'd borrow it, right now, you know, we've got a fund balance to dig it out of cash. In the future, I can't tell you that that would be the case.
Well, I guess one other opportunity is, and I'm not going either way here, but if we chose not to do Ironwood, at some point, that land will get developed and the developer would pay for it. Now, when that's going to happen, I don't know. Uh, I don't know if anyone's talked to the owner of that land to see what their thoughts are, but I would be curious as to what they're thinking.
I personally would hate to miss the opportunity to do all that paving in the park and make it pretty much a first-class, you know, facility.
Uh, getting back to the cost estimates, it's two point nine two four if you don't do curb and gutter, and then it's three point six million if you include curb and gutter.
Well, cur- I bet Devon would like to have a parking lot.
I told you, we weren't going to put you on the spot at the briefing meeting, so now you're really on the spot, so.
That's right.
All right.
Hook you up Barb.
Go rabbits.
Um, no, obviously.
I warned you.
I'm for all the improvements that we can do down there. We've been talking about parking lots for a long time. And park department, we don't have anything in our budget close enough to, to touch anything. So I'm for all of them. I am for curb and gutter. Um, you know, it gives you that line. Here's where the parking lot ends and here's where the grass starts. If you don't have that, you, you get that mix of everything. And people can still drive in the grass. We'd still have to have the parking posts or rocks or something that's not quite so aesthetically pleasing to look at around the whole thing. Um, so that's, that's my preference. Um, hundred percent my opinion too. I would hate to give up on Ironwood. Um, right now, I know we spent a lot of time and effort, you know, getting the land so that we could get it. Um, just my opinion, but I would rather do, keep going with Ironwood than, uh, than do the, the three lane. I want to do the parking lots, obviously, that, that's a given if that's going to happen. But, to me, Ironwood solves the problem. The other scenario, you know, it might help, it's, it's hard to, to say, I guess. But that's just, just my opinion, not part of the-
I don't think we have enough money to do both.
No, i- if I was given a choice, I would still like to keep pushing Ironwood, but...
And so skip the parking lot paving?
Well, no, but, I mean, if there's, yeah.
There's not enough money for both.
Yeah, I would personally choose Ironwood. People have been asking for a second entrance exit for a long time.
We probably have no traffic count of how many, you know, in that area, it's just too hard to determine, you know?
The other, the other thing to think about when we, as we consider, uh, the Aspen Park Road improvements, construction season in South Dakota is April first to November first roughly. Depending when you wanted to do this, or, 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 you know, if we're trying to hit the, the big, uh, state baseball tournament, which is in the first week in August, we would need to get in. And, and part of that discussion during design with DGR would be to establish some timelines and some goals that need to get done. For instance, the pool parking lot, I think, in my recommendation, would need to be done before the pools open. So before Memorial Day weekend, that pool parking lot would need to be done. And then as you go through the rest of it, uh, it will, if you want it done before August, uh, it will, you know, impact baseball, softball seasons. Is, if we're paving the parking lots, judging, judging by, uh, street projects, start to finish, uh, at least a month. From the time you do the base, sub-base, the curb and gutter, the actual paving, it's going to be about a month. So, one of those things that we're going to have to talk about with DGR is, okay, where can we push the parking for tournaments and or leagues? But that would be one thing that we need to discuss with DGR.
So if we did, if we did, um, Ironwood, oh, sorry. If we did Ironwood, the, our cost theoretically is at two point three. And then what did you say it would be for, if we did all of the parking lot, Brian?
If, if we did all of the parking lot with now curb, it'd be two, two point nine two four. So, roughly the same. If we did... True, our cost is two point three. I was looking at total project cost. If we did everything with curb, uh, you're looking at three point six.
I was just trying to think, what could we do, Ironwood and the parking lots and not do the other road? Is there some combination there? I, I mean-
Yeah, the, the, the parking lots, well, uh, four fifty-five, three, four, be about two million.
Extra?
For the parking lots with curb, that's the pool parking lot, the main parking lot, and then option one A with curb and gutter. And I'm, I'm just adding this up in my head, so there's, do not fact check.
Either one of these options, the pool parking lot would still have curb and gutter, and that's at that two point nine? Is that my understanding? You said, you said you would want the pool to have the curb and gutter?
Yes.
So that's, that's in that two point nine with the rest of it without curb and gutter?
Correct.
And when you talk about curb and gutter, are you talking about the entire roadway or just the parking lot?
I believe it's the whole roadway, isn't it? Yep, it's all roadway.
Okay, so any estimate on what it would take to not do the curb and gutter on the roadway, but to, to do it on the...
Yeah, the, the roadway has two fifty, three hundred, so about five hundred and fifty thousand for the roadway, curb and gutter on the roadway, about five fifty. Curb and gutter on the main parking lot, and option one A is two point, or two hundred and forty thousand?
But if we do, if we would do Ironwood, in my mind, we wouldn't need to expand the existing roadway coming in. So what if we did the parking lots and Ironwood? Because that would take the pressure off of that main entrance. I don't think we need both. If we get Ironwood, I don't think we need to expand the other roadway. So could we back that one off? Because I'd like to have it second entrance for emergencies, better than, if we, if we get swaying.
I agree that we wouldn't have to expand that road. Why would you?
You're just saying, you're saying, iron, uh, complete Ironwood and then pave the parking lots, basically? And then we wouldn't need to do the pool parking lot, right?
Correct.
We still need a pool parking lot.
Yeah, if, if you just did the parking lots, the main area and option one A with no curb and gutter, you'd be at one point three five cost. So the tough position for me all along is doing, doing Ironwood has been extending it through and, and paving that road and adding that special assessment to the residents that live there, right? Um, what would, what would the total cost to the city be if we did not assess any of those properties? Two point nine total, yep. That's, that's the Ironwood total cost.
Estimated, we don't, you know, you really don't know until you bid it out, but estimated, yes, too many.
It's an extra six hundred thousand.
Personally, I would like to see the Ironwood thing completed by the, the developers when that time comes. Um, it's not as, I guess, critical for me. This is one of our parks, it's supposed to be kind of a showcase park, and it's not. You know, when you drive in there and, and everything, having a time for the state tournament, I think, is probably unrealistic though, uh, to disrupt the entire city. And that shouldn't, that should not be driving this decision or when, when it could be done.
Yeah, typically when we, when we work in Aspen Park, we try to do it after baseball and softball, kind of in, in that late July, August. Because then we've got flight football that starts end of August, first part of September, although not quite as much usage as baseball, softball. But, basically the fall is when we get to work in Aspen Park, if we don't want to interrupt too much.
As former police chief, um, I guess my concern is if we had an emergency on the road, let's say by the water treatment plant or the pool, something like that, and that road was blocked, how would our citizens get out? Emergency vehicles could probably just bulldoze their way through, but we don't have another way for our people to get out. So that, I keep coming back to that because I, we were kind of trapped there once and, um, so I hear what you're saying, I'd rather have a developer pay for it too, but I keep going back to that.
I, I guess you can't, you know, looking at it from that standpoint, you... You can't build everything for that, that one emergency. You know, you'd, you'd never get it addressed. Those, those emergencies happen on, on the interstate. I was, uh, driving back from, uh, Yankton yesterday and, and there was traffic backed up for miles because of something in the other lane. Didn't affect me, I, I made it home safely and on time, but, uh, you know, so you can't, you know, it's like building the church for, for Easter. You know, it's like building the church for, for Easter and Christmas. Um, you just can't, you can't do that. Does it happen very often where we've had emergencies down there? We had it very often when we had unexpected weather that's come in and disrupted things. Usually, we know in these days and age, you know, when, when a serious storm has come in and, and things can be taken to move people out of there quickly. I, uh, I kinda like this, this plan. I don't know about curb and gutter all the way down the roadway. But I think that this would probably help with people getting out, if you have two lanes getting out, so.
What would, what would be if we just did curb and gutter past the water treatment plant?
I'd have to look, we'd have to look. You know, looking at it, back to, to Barb's idea, just if you wanted to do ironwood and just the parking lots, not including the pool parking lot of the roadway, you'd be looking at somewhere between three point seven and three point nine, depending if you wanted to do curb and gutter. Now, just remember, on ironwood, it's special assessments, that's what's proposed. Total cost be, it may be higher or lower than two point nine. And then those special assessments would, would pick up about six hundred thousand or so. And those can be protested through the courts. So at this point in time, you know, our cost estimate for the city shares, two point three million. That may go up or down, depending on, not just project costs, but if there's an assessment now. I assume you can add curb and gutter later, is that, or is that a big problem? You can, it's not the greatest cost value.
Well, this kinda goes back to what Randy said, I think, Thursday night, I think it was Randy, that said, if you're going to do it, do it right. And we don't have to go back later. It'll cost a little bit more, but.
And I, I think, um, you know, I don't think any of us likes the idea of the special assessment, but if we go away from that concept on development, then we're setting a precedent, um, for future development. And so that would be my concern about waiving the special assessment.
That, that brought up Kevin's thought. I don't know if that means anything to this, but I just have a question.
So, if, if we don't special assess, if we don't do ironwood, and a developer comes in, does he assess people?
Nope.
Okay.
He just eats that. He just, he just eats the cost.
Or she.
Or she, sorry. Sorry, Harry.
Wow. We kinda know who owns that, and it's a he, so.
I will self-report to HR. And, and the reason for the special assessments, if the city in the past, if the city has built a road, we have special assess against the benefit of property owners. That's been the past practice. If you don't, uh, could the next developer come in and say, hey, build this road for me? You did it here, and you didn't. Granted, we've got this Aspen Park there, which adds a whole different layer to it. But, uh, if we're trying to keep things fair, as I would done in the past, special assessment should be followed. I know they're not popular. We don't like to do them either.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I understand the need and the, the standard behind it. My concern, especially in this case, you know, we, we look at another potential special assessment that was looked at on the other side of town, right? But in this case, it talks about the, the value and the benefit added to the homeowner. And in this case, I really don't see a value and benefit to these homeowners, because they enjoy what they have right now in their neighborhood. And adding a road through there only really is gonna add more traffic for them. It doesn't really add any addition. I mean, truly, in the long run, when they sell their property, maybe there's some additional value there. But I don't think that any of them are interested in selling their property anytime soon.
But Kevin, that, you have to decide later whether there's a special benefit to them. And, and you'll have a discussion about the amount of the special benefit to each property owner. So whether the council later decides there's zero, or, uh, the six hundred thousand dollars. That's a discussion that you get based upon a lot of evidence that's gonna come before you. So you don't decide that right now.
No, I, I, I get that, just.
Just to make sure you understand, you, you're having a discussion philosophically, but at the end of the day, you could decide, nobody has a special benefit.
I'm just saying, in the context of what decision, or what, what direction we choose to go with this other plan is all, so, yeah, I get you.
Yeah, I mean, I think you just gotta go through the process on ironwood and, and see what happens. I understand the traffic going on anywhere, but you could potentially drive more traffic down Glenwood too, so just keep that in mind.
I'm just kinda curious if we've got anybody here that wanted to speak to this. Since you have that, since you have that extremely thick file.
Hello, Kathy Buheim, one five one two, South Sioux Boulevard, resident of said ironwood project. Um, yeah, uh, exactly what Kevin said. It is not going to benefit our property whatsoever. We do not look at developing it. Uh, we sit on five acres of in-town property. Our two neighbors to the south are, um, single individuals that cannot afford this. Uh, my son does wanna go to college. Um, I hope to help him with that. Um, with this assessment, I'm gonna have to work longer. I'm going to have to make decisions on colleges. Um, my assessment right now is sitting at around eighty thousand dollars. Eighty thousand dollars that I don't have in my back pocket to give you for cash. Ten years, you want to pull this out. I was hoping to retire. I understand the need. I have a son that plays in all the sports. Um, I understand the need for the second, uh, driveway. To what extent, I'm not so sure. Um, the three property owners that actually live on ironwood, or on, on our easement right now, um, there won't be any benefit there, except for backed up traffic on ironwood, getting out of there. The gentleman who bought out, um, Mike Coughlin, is, uh, Houston's. We all know that, and he's got the most to gain for this. He's gonna develop that property, and he is going to be the beneficiary of this, as well as the park. So having an assessment done on the few residents that live there and want to stay there. My husband and I grew up in small towns with, uh, farm-like property. That's where we are, and that's why we wanna stay there. Again, I know, um, the second driveway is needed, um, but it's really time to really think about who's benefiting. You're also looking at, um, you're talking about baseball and softball. Economic impact goes to your hotels. Your economic impact goes to your grocery stores, your gas stations. Check out Casey's on a softball or baseball weekend. There is zero Gatorade left in there. Who's buying it, guys? Not the people that live here. Um, and if we are all benefiting of Aspen Park, then the whole city should be assessed for Aspen Park.
Any other discussion?
So are we thinking we wanna hold off and let, give some direction to Park Board?
Is that kinda what the, the, the pulse of the council is right now?
I think they need some, they need some indication from this group to at least get their conversation started. They are not going to, they are not going, they're used to, they're used to asking for, and Barb, correct me if I'm wrong, between four hundred and five hundred thousand dollars a year, begging, pleading, that kinda thing. They're certainly not going to say, we're gonna make a decision which way the city should go on a two point nine million dollar project. So I think they need some kinda direction, yes. And I'm not gonna be the only one giving them that direction.
You know, as far as that direction goes, I think I've spoken my piece, where I, I kinda said I kinda favor improving the park, uh, as opposed to the ironwood project. If anybody else wants to speak up.
What do you think?
Yeah, I'd be, I, I think I'd fall on that line. I'd be more interested in, rather than trying to go down this iron, ironwood thing right now. If we, if there's another way that we can, we can do this by improving what we, what we have, and helping with this, with the traffic flow, I'd be open to going, going down that route, and delaying this ironwood extension.
Bruce, what do you think?
Well, I, I've been involved in coaching for a number of years, and, and we've had tornadoes, we've had storms, and it's, it's a nightmare getting out of there. If we make the third lane, is that gonna improve it anymore, getting out to the side streets, you know, you're still gonna have backed up traffic? I, you know, I think the second exit's needed, and as our population grows, I think the problem gets more serious every year. Seems like every tournament I go to now, they're bigger than they were, you know, it's getting more and more teams. Brandon has more teams of its own. It'd be great if we could do the second exit and pave some of the parking lots, I think, so, I mean, we could make something work like that.
With our budget, that's not gonna happen.
No.
Barb, what do you think?
Well, you know, we've been wrestling with this for years and years. I guess I'm going to support Devin, and he's the one that works down there all the time, and he deals with the, the traffic and stuff. And if he feels that, that second exit is that important, Devin, Devin usually is pretty quiet. So for Devin to say that, I, I appreciate that, Devin, so I'm gonna go with Devin.
Kevin, what do you think?
Uh, I would be leaning more towards, um, improving the, the ballpark itself, paving the roadway, uh, putting in. Unfortunately, adding that third lane doesn't do much for what's down there right now, but is that, uh, a natural speed bump, so to speak, with the, the condition of the other road? But, um, I would be more in favor of improving that than, uh, paving it all the way through right now. I think Kathy made some good points there when she spoke, so.
My take is that I would, uh, I would go with the alternative plan and do three lanes and do parking lots. Yeah.
Yeah, it's kinda, um.
Randy, you're the one.
I, I, I didn't, but I would, I would like to not commit, because I'd like to go to Park Board Wednesday as not having committed either way. Yep. I will commit at some point, but I would like to not commit tonight, because that's gonna direct the, I, I believe that will direct some of them as to what they believe I want, being the council member on that board.
So it looks like we've got, like, three council people that would like to do the, uh, the three lane road and do the park, parking lots, and two that would not, and one undecided. Alright, let's move on.
Just one question. Um, we'll put together some stuff for the park community. We've got it out already. It's the same stuff that's in your packet that they had last week. When we're talking about the parking lots, option one A, the biggest, the, the largest one, we're gonna look at numbers. Otherwise, we're gonna run how many different scenarios?
Yeah.
Okay. Again, going back to, that if you're gonna build it, build it right, yeah.
Alright, uh, shared use paths, uh, use path in the Bluffs Edition, track five. Do we need a motion on this?
Correct. Uh, DGR submitted a proposal to do some preliminary engineering to develop a, a shared use path going from the Bluffs into the Big Sioux Rec. There's a map there, uh, that shows the location on page sixty-three. DGR's cost is thirty-eight thousand. It's a change.
Recommended?
So Tammy, this is what we walked underneath the power lines, right?
Yes, yep. Part four did go out there and look at it.
I'll look for a motion.
Thirty-eight thousand for the study, the preliminary, it's thirty-eight.
Thirty-one, six seventy.
Thirty-one. Thirty-one, six seventy.
I would make a motion to approve that.
I'd second that.
Motion second to approve. Any further discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Uh, you've got the police report on page sixty-six through sixty-eight, uh, inspection report on sixty-nine and seventy-one. And we have a request for fireworks af, at the high school or after football games?
After football games. The, the email from Kathy Nickleson, uh, asked, oh, good, okay.
Yeah, and I think it's during and after, so.
Yes.
Kathy, can we, have you pushed the button so the red light is on? No. There you go.
Okay, Kathy Nickleson, three hundred Eighth Avenue South, and Erin Carroll's here with me today. We, um, for the, about the last four or five years, we've been, um, a small group of us setting off fireworks after the touchdowns at the football, at, at the football games, and it was brought to my attention, we probably should do it legally and ask for a permit to get it done. I know, I was gonna say, if you've been to the football game, you know, I'm not saying it's me, I'm not saying it's Erin, but there's a small group of neighbors. So we took the advice of having it done the right way, and we're requesting a permit to have that done.
And I'm Erin Carroll, three oh one, South Eighth Avenue, so I'm one of the people that have done it too, for all these years. And I know it got brought up, the extra point wasn't our fault. That was just an early season oops that happened on that one. But no, we've done it, and like, even my brother was in the stands, my mom was in the stands, other people came up to me at school. It's just something that they like. We don't do it at random. We don't just start shooting them whenever we want. We do it after the extra point, and it's just to get the crowd pumped up, and we do it in a safe area and everything along those lines. So we're not trying to cause, like, attention to us or anything like that to be cool, but we're just trying to celebrate, keep that small-town feel to the football team and everything along those lines, so. We'd really appreciate to keep doing it and everything, and have the city buy our fire, no, just kidding.
I, I appreciate you coming forward, because our people that I was somewhat in charge of were the beneficiary of that, and I agree, it was something, it was something special. But now, sitting in this position for the last, for the last little while, and even before I was in this position after, I'm going, eh, 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 yeah, cause, you know, we have people that we have to assess for mowing their, their lawn, and they go, why can they do that? And why can't we do this? So asking, asking permission after, after this, and it was brought to your attention, um, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Police chief?
Can we, uh, go back over the last four years and write citations?
It was an admission. Well, just Erin, yeah.
Yes, mayor.
Your thoughts?
Um, well, um, it, it is festive, and I'm all about it, as Mr. Mercer was, I'm all about festive atmospheres. Um, I, I guess, you know, as a public safety, I would probably ask some questions about, you know, whether shooting them off, what kinda fireworks they are. Is there any danger to the stadium or the community, or that kinda stuff? And then you also have to, I mean, if the neighbor block down comes the next week and wants to shoot out fireworks, which again, I'm not saying I oppose to, but you have to be prepared for other people now asking as well. So I just, like, you may wanna call in backup and maybe ask a few questions before you look to make a decision. That would be my advice to you.
And I would just say that under ordinance seven one one, the council has the ability to issue a permit for the discharge of fireworks, um, to any group or individuals, other than the times and dates that we specify over the Fourth of July, based upon such terms and conditions as you establish. So if you're going to, to allow it, make sure we're clear in what you're setting, like, hours, just the game days, every touchdown, whatever, and after the game, whatever. So whatever terms and conditions need to be specified. Thanks.
Right, to, to that point, Lisa, I, I remember a couple of years ago when we did the fiftieth anniversary, right? And, and they were assigned a special permit for that night. Would we have to assign a permit for each home football game?
Not for each. I mean, you could just say for every home football game. The fireworks may be shot by, and then maybe it's a, the residents of whatever, um, give the names or addresses, after, you know, within two. uh, after, you know, within two minutes after the first score, or after each score, or immediately after each score, or the first score and maybe within two minutes after the game ends, something like that. Um, you know, and not to exceed more than one discharge per score, something like that, so it's very clear. We issue a, a permit to Bethany Meadows, you know, they want to do theirs, and we issue a permit to them. We've issued the permit to the city to do our special 50th anniversary. So whatever terms and conditions, when you make your motion, just put it in there and identify the individuals, like I said, and what parameters you want.
Have we had any complaints yet, Anna?
Well, I get complaints that the ordinance is not being followed. That's the complaint I get as the city, um, attorney. But I haven't gotten complaints that they're actually being discharged, other than not in compliance with the ordinance. Now, ordinance has, you know, class, you know, up to class 1.4G, so those are the ones that you can buy in a retail store.
I don't think we're going to get people that want to do this at soccer games. First of all, you're lucky if you have a goal, most soccer matches, and that's not negative soccer, that's just the reality. Um, you know, track meets, JV freshman football games, if, if, if I'm going to support this, I'm going to say it's varsity football games only during a specific season or whatever. Um, so I, you know...
Why don't you give us an ordinance?
Are people, are people three, are people three blocks away going to do it? I don't think so. I think the, the special effect of this is that it's within a block of the stadium, within a half a block of the stadium. I mean, it's right there, it's over the stadium when it bursts, so, um, I think, I think it'd be easy for me to, to, if I support this one, not support others that are further away or for other, other activities, probably, just because of the, just because of the proximity of this.
And Curly, you're just doing it after touchdowns? You're not doing it at the end of the game if they win? Do you shoot off?
I did it after the National Anthem. I wait till National Anthem, but I don't, the schedule, whatever, I just want to, I just want to do it after that, and then get the after touchdowns, and we did it after the game. But no, we don't, um, I think anything like that, just the game important, because that's the goal. And I think that just, I don't, it's like I said, it's a small company deal. I organize the game for Ann and I teach here, coach here, everything like that, so I just don't have much to, just interview teams. So I'm actually a special...
How many years have you been doing this? Uh, how many years have you been doing this?
Allegedly. Four.
No, I've been retired for, uh, five years, and it was happening back then.
Probably about six.
So...
Seems like it's about the length of the turf, so I, I was going to say five, six, yeah.
So, I haven't seen it, I apologize. So it, it comes over the stadium?
No.
No.
Does not come over the stadium.
Oh, okay. So then the school doesn't care, okay.
Any other discussion? Otherwise, we'll look for a motion.
Couple, couple of things you might want to consider in the motion. One, uh, do you want this just for the 2024 football season? I think, I think you should, and then you can review it annually, just in case we get complaints. Uh, right now, after the National Anthem, after touchdowns, at the end of the game, do you want to say immediately after, uh, one aerial, two aerials? Do you want to limit the number of aerials? Yeah, that's what I was going to say, address for, that they're shut off from.
Do, do you, do you shoot them off from the same place every time? Okay, so, so we, so we put your two addresses down, okay? Prepared to make a motion, unless somebody else is? Okay. Okay, um, I think I had everything except addresses and how many aerials, Brian? I think I had everything else jotted down, so I would make a motion to allow at two addresses that are the Carol's and Nicklesons, okay? At those two addresses, for the 2024 season, um, must be Class C fireworks or lesser. Um, one aerial per, per time to be done at, up to and including the National Anthem. Every touchdown after the conversion is good or fails, and within two minutes after the final second of the football game. And when I say, so that's my motion, when I say yearly, wouldn't be probably quite the process if things go well. Next year, it would just be writing the letter, and if it went well this year, you probably wouldn't have to be here and have all this discussion. So that's my motion. I said after the National Anthem, after all, all touchdowns, and after the ga, well, I, I have win on mine. Because you're not going to shoot it after a loss, am I right? So I'm putting, so I, in my motion, I said after a win. Within two minutes after a win. I did, I did, I did say that earlier, yes, home varsity football games, yes. That's part of the motion, please.
So that includes a, like, if there's a playoff game?
Yes. That would be a home varsity game, yep.
We have a motion. And we have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Do we, do you have both those addresses in the, okay?
All right, we're going to move on to administration, but we've got the 2023 audit report. It was, man, pages 73 to 157.
It's always nice to get another year done, so. The only things I'll really say is there's no audit findings, um, not much change from my annual report. Obviously, there's more detail in this that they prepare. And we did have about a little over 6.6 million in federal awards in 2023, so it was a busy year on that. Other than that, I don't have anything to report unless you have questions. I do have paper audits here, so if you want to take one home, I do have that as well. Otherwise, it'll be uploaded to the website once approved.
So because we have that committee that does the oversight on the reconciling, the bank statements and all that, we don't get that audit finding anywhere? Terrific. Who's, who's on that committee?
Right now, it's Conan and Bruce.
Guys, thank you, thank you very much.
All right, I'll look for a motion.
Second.
Motion second to approve the audit report. Any further discussion? If you're done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Yes, you can, if you want.
Streets, we've got the, um, the work report on 158, and we have resolution 31-24, setting street maintenance fees on 159 and 160. I'll look for a motion on that. Motion second to approve resolution 3124. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Uh, we've got Core Phase 2B project pay application, number five. I'll look for a motion on that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to approve the core area Phase 2B pay app. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Process has come along pretty good now?
Yeah, I think they're finishing up sidewalks today and tomorrow, and then they're going to move into driveways and asphalt here pretty soon, so they're wrapping it up.
Good. All right, we've got the, uh, painting quote. No. Okay. And, uh, water and sewer, we've got a water treatment plant payout, number 22. Motion second to approve the water treatment plant pay application. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. No new business, and we don't have a need for an executive session, so I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We are adjourned.